Welcome. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education on March 20, 2018. Laura, could you call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Okay. And do we do the Pledge of Allegiance in this case? No? Okay, great. So, and we did put on our agenda for this evening, public hearing and public participation. We did not have anybody sign up. Did anyone forget to sign up who wanted to say something? Okay, great. And then we thought we would start this meeting with Board Communication. And I'll start. The reason for this special meeting is to offer us the option to act on the Superintendent search. So we have been engaged in a Superintendent search process. And on March 5, 2018, two finalists were identified and announced for the position. Both candidates have visited the district and community interviews were held with each one. The Board is now authorized to consider and appoint a Superintendent, subject to contract negotiations. And so I'll just -- a little bit about the process if you haven't read about it. We've had some coverage about how we went through this process. To begin, in the fall, we had around 25 community forums that helped us develop a set of qualities and values that we were looking for in the Superintendent. These were formed by the community, by our staff, by students and parents. From there, we opened up an application through our search for Moran Associates, and we received 80 -- or 79 applications for the position. From then, we interviewed 12 candidates and came down to two finalists. The two finalists went through a rigorous -- and the Board members went through a pretty rigorous three-day process. We had two community panels on different nights to try to accommodate people's different schedules. We took tours of schools. We went to four different schools: Meadowlark, Boulder High, Pioneer, and Lewisville Middle. And we saw the Superintendent candidates interact with principals, with staff, with parents. Board members were at all the community panels. We were on the school tours. And then we spent most of that Saturday, that was a couple weeks ago now, in long interviews with both candidates. And I just, I want to personally thank both candidates. It was -- I appreciate how much they put on the line in this process. It's a very public process, and I think you put a lot of yourself out there. And I think about whether I would engage in this. It just takes a lot of courage. And I'm just thankful that these candidates stepped up to common, to show so much enthusiasm for working for our district and for the students of the Boulder Valley School District. So those are going to be my comments before we proceed. Would anyone else like to say anything at this time? Okay. No comments? Great. So then, we would move on to action. The action item is 4.01, consideration of and potential action on the appointment of a -- I forgot to say something about public comments. Can I add one thing that I forgot to say? So during this process, people reach out to you, and they talk to you a lot about the Superintendent process. And I did -- what is one thing that one community member said to me? And this person said, you know, regardless of who you hire, the Board actually has to take a lot of responsibility in what's going to happen for the district. And so the success of the Superintendent is going to weigh pretty heavily on the success of this Board and our ability to offer clear direction and to help create a vision. We are elected by our community to help translate that vision into a direction for our Superintendent. Similarly, the Superintendent will do the same for our district. But I believe that we have a lot of responsibility in this process too, and I'm hoping that we can be a very good Board in terms of how we bring on a new person to help lead our district. So that's what I also wanted to add. Okay. So that being said, we'll go on to the action item, which is 4.01, consideration of and potential action on the appointment of a Superintendent from among the finalists. Would anyone like to make a motion? Shelley?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education appoint Rob Anderson as Superintendent of the Boulder Valley School District RE2, subject to Board approval of a mutually agreeable employment contract, and that the Board of Education authorize the President of the Board to work with District Legal Counsel to negotiate the terms of the contract with Rob Anderson.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Shelley, seconded by Kitty. Do we have some discussion around this motion? Board members, Sam?
Sure. I'll be a yes vote on this motion. I was impressed by Dr. Anderson's breadth of experience. He kept coming back to his time as a teacher and a high school principal, and I think that's, that's the right thing to come back to, in my mind. But he's also run several different areas of large school districts, both in Florida and Fulton County. I think there's some, some differences, but also some similarities in those districts with ours. And I sensed a clear commitment to working hard to close the achievement gap, and I'm really looking forward to working with him pending the outcome of this vote. And I, you know, I really appreciated your remarks, Tina, because I think this is probably the most important decision we're going to make as Board members. So we want to get it right, and I think we have the right candidate.
Thank you. Any other comments, Board members? Kitty?
Thank you. I will also be a yes vote on this. I spent time with Dr. Anderson touring the schools on the, what is it, two Fridays ago, whenever it was. And he was wonderful to be around. He was so interested in our schools. He asked a lot of questions. He was extremely engaged. And I think he, you know, he asked the right kinds of questions. I think he's a very strong candidate. One of the things that impressed me was how, I think it's his Superintendent had said that he's been ready for a while, but that he's very loyal. And so it was time for him to step up to be a Superintendent, and I think he'd be a very good fit for us.
Donna?
I too was very impressed with him in meeting him personally and seeing his video interview. I feel he comes very highly qualified. And I loved his, that he has, he's young. He's enthusiastic. He has a family that will be coming with him, that he refers to as Team Anderson. And it was just delightful to meet him, but to read of his credentials and see so many people in the places he's been that support him.
Any other comments by Board members?
Shelley?
Yeah, I just want to thank both Krish and Rob for going through this process. I think it was every bit as grueling as you described, Tina, and they both were real sports in the process and really committed to the process. I wish Krish good luck in his other search processes that he's involved in. And I'd just like to comment too on Rob's enthusiasm. He really, really wants to be here, and I think that's very, very important. He was very sincere. He has, as far as I can tell, the highest of integrity, which I think is really important to this district, and he's extremely intelligent. So I think we have a very, very highly qualified candidate, and I'm really excited to welcome him to BVSD.
Other comments?
I appreciate what you said a while ago, Tina, in terms of the incoming Superintendent will need the support of the Board, and we need to support that particular Superintendent as much as we can if we expect him to be successful. And both of them were pretty energetic. I liked both of them. And then you mentioned in the beginning that there were like, how many, 79 applications? Out of 79 applications, how many were from Colorado? I can't recall, but do you remember?
I think it was 15.
15 applications from Colorado?
I could be mistaken.
I thought it was more like about 20, but anyway, we don't want to debate that. My vote is going to be no, but I want you to know that just because I'm voting no doesn't necessarily mean that I will not be cooperating and working with the new Superintendent, but my vote is no.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm surprised at how challenging this has been to come to a decision for me personally, and I think I've seen the struggle amongst all of my fellow Board members. I appreciate, Tina, very much what you said about how the success of the district and of our incoming Superintendent will depend on the support and direction that we give the Superintendent, and I, and I believe that. Before, a few hours ago, I was pretty sure I was going to be a no vote, but I think that sending the right message that we are coming together as a Board on this, and we want to support and give the Superintendent the best opportunity we can to be successful, I'll probably end up, by the time my name gets called, saying yes. It doesn't mean that I have thought, I thought the process was fair and transparent. I learned some things about the process that I think we could have improved upon, for sure, having never gone through this before. And, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. So with that said, I don't want, I don't want, when we start with this, this new chapter in BVSD, for there to be any doubt about commitment and support of the direction going forward. So that's what I would say.
Any other comments, Board members? All right. Laura, do you want to call the motion to vote?
Shelley had already read the motion. I'll call the roll now. Okay. Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Well, with that, I think congratulations to Rob Anderson, and pending a successful contract negotiation, we'll be looking forward to his leadership here in Boulder Valley School District. And it's an exciting time, and we're hoping to see him and starting to introduce him to the unique district that we are in our hopes and our dreams for all of our students. With that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting. Thank you.